actively right now, just trying to adjust for you. You know how we couldn't make it.
No.
Paul, I said you're missing.
Ooh.
And he's sweating.
I'm telling you.
They have fans on each side, so.
What is that?
These are trying to get air and they're trying to adjust it now.
Yeah.
It might be chilly.
Testing.
Yep. Cause that one's red and that one's green. I'm afraid that that means a battery as well. You don't come from a city where there are no problems. Yeah, but it's red when you have your battery. So that one, do you see it? Green. That's what I ask you. That's what my battery.
All right, were you for the applicants?
Yeah.
And all of us.
Oh.
I mean, the rest.
Absolutely.
I can't proceed. All right.
Hey. How you doing? I'm not in back there, but it's probably real. It's just Charlene and. Uh-oh. Uh, I didn't know anything about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
How about, oh, no, who's that? How did you know? Support us again.
It's the only, uh, now that I opened to her.
Yeah.
I thought you missed your loss.
How are you?
Um. Susan, we did throw a little kink in the agenda.
Okay.
This was Ron's idea, which is a good idea. So right after we approve the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna go over that schedule, which I'll, it's a, it's basically our deadline to review this. As you remember, after the planning commission, it's probably ninety days.
Ninety day, yes.
So this will just be an update on where we are with all the other projects. Not all of them, because some here, it doesn't matter anymore, but it's later than that.
Okay.
And I'll explain a lot. There's only, we only need to get certain of these last columns. So I'll go real quick.
Okay.
And we'll just make that part of the agenda going forward.
Okay.
So that would be all of that.
Alrighty.
Yeah.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, how about, does the lady ever get back to you? We're here. Okay. Yeah, it is. No, remember the lady who was so versatile?
Hey, Michelleene, just double checking to make sure that you can come across.
Sorry.
Hey, man. Hey, man. We just want to make sure we have the floor. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
It's a short meeting, so you can get out.
Yeah.
Yes, well, surely, right? It beats, it beats that.
Hello, how are you?
Yeah, we got you.
Last winter. I mean, last summer.
Uh-huh.
Just didn't start, you can come across.
You think you can hide. You can't hide. Just the three of us, yeah.
Walking through here like you're hair.
Yeah, something like that.
This is number four on your agenda. Okay, this is number four. We just have the new, they're going to do. Soon as you're ready, I'll be ready. Okay. I'm getting my pen. First of all, which one actually writes? You said this is number four. I've just got these glazes and still. It's so tiny. I'm not telling you before here about that, you're being on the agenda. Okay. Give this up, don't I? Please, let me. Yes. Agenda. Okay. Are you ready? Good afternoon. We're called to order the City of Chester Planning Commission meeting, March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. It is now two oh two. Can I get a roll call, please?
Susan Dennis.
Present.
Leola Williams. Not present. Eartha Banks.
Present.
Uh, Charlene Laws.
Present.
Mr. Harry Copman is not present.
All right, thank you. So we have a quorum present. Uh, are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Can I get an approval for the minutes of February the twelfth, twenty twenty-five?
I approve of the minutes from February twenty twenty-five.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And now we're going to do a review of subdivision and land development application. Mr. Fitz, thank you.
Yeah, this is something new that we're adding to the agenda. Um, Ron Madison from Colliers recommended it. It's a good idea. Basically, this is just giving you an update on the status of projects that we've reviewed as a planning commission, but have not approved yet or denied, um, or made a recommendation, I should say. So really, what I, why you just focus on is the last four columns to the right there. And they have the dates. One is the date when the PC meeting happened. Uh, the next one is when the MPC review deadline occurs, which is ninety days after that PC meeting, first PC meeting. And then there's a column, second to last one, is the extension date, and that is a date which Susan knows, because she has to sign these forms, when the applicant makes a request to extend the review period, um, which is a normal thing and it's, it's quite typical. And then the last part is just notes to give you a status update. Now, you'll notice one of the, the, on the fourth, the last columns, the six eleven to six nineteen West Seventh Street and the project titled seven forty-two West Front Street, those were pulled from the agenda from the last meeting. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we were covering ourselves on the clock, so we've asked for extensions on those. And, uh, we do have extensions on those, and actually I got an extension for seven forty-two West Front Street today. Uh, and extends to six ten, twenty twenty-five, June tenth. Um, and then for that last one, thirty-three oh eight West Second Street, that's the one we reviewed last month. And, um, if we don't hear back from them by next month, I'll probably ask for an extension as well. But they, their review period does not end until our month, our May meeting date.
Okay.
So that's a quick update. I think this is useful because these projects can get lost i- in the sphere. We can all forget in this way, they're out in front of us and actually it's good even for the public to be aware of it as well. Is there any questions on that?
No question from me, but I do have a comment. I have old eyes.
Oh, yeah, you don't like the small sheet? Oh, yeah. I've heard that before from a neighbor here.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yes, yes.
So maybe if we can make it so it's, uh, just a little larger.
Yeah, maybe I, I can condense the information in here.
Right.
Yeah. So I, I appreciate that. I can, I can work on that definitely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And now I'll turn it over to our Assistant Planning Director, Ms. Kim Gardner.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So our very first and only item of business today, um, is a sketch plan, um, that'll be brought before you. Um, it's at twenty-six hundred West Third Street. It's actually twenty-six hundred, twenty-six oh two, twenty-six oh four, uh, West Third Street. It's in the C two R, which is the general commercial residential zoning district. Uh, the applicant, their name, the name is Anthony Ifyomi Kaba. Um, and what they're proposing to do is the consolidation of three lots, which twenty-six hundred, twenty-six oh two is land and twenty-six oh four to twenty-six oh six is a, a building. Um, the use of existing three-story building at twenty-six oh four, twenty-six oh six West Third Street would like to be used as a banquet hall and the construction of a parking lot with eleven parking spaces on the vacant lots located at twenty-six hundred and twenty-six oh two West Third Street. They're trying to consolidate the three lots into the one, so that the twenty-six hundred and twenty-six oh two could be their parking lot. The picture is there on the screen. And that is it.
Okay. And is there anybody here representing the property? If you will come forward and state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Kenneth Johnson, I'm the architect. Um, and address is forty-three East Schoolhouse Lane, Philadelphia, PA.
All right. And do you have anything that you want to add to this?
No, it's just, um, like I said, we, we put in a, a new parking lot. It's gonna be paved about approximately eleven, um, parking spaces. Two of them will be ADA accessible. There will be two, um, new curb cuts. It will be a through lot, so that, um, you come in one way and you go out the other way. There's parking lots, uh, parking, uh, lots on the slant. And, um, the owners are here, so we got any question for the owners. The building, I think, is approximately sixty people, um, would probably be in the building. And, um, I don't know, the hours of operation, you know, yet? Or are you still working on it?
Nine to twelve in the night. What, whatever.
The township says it's a kink. For a banquet hall.
Okay.
So, Mr. Johnson, would you repeat on the microphone the address of your, because it's not only application.
Oh.
The address of your business?
Well, it's, um, forty-three East Schoolhouse Lane, Philadelphia, PA, one nine one four four. I think that's it for now.
All right. Um, any questions? Oh, you wanna come? Sure, no problem.
You have, I hope, in front of you are the memo that is dated March seventh, which is the Planning and Zoning Department's review letter. I just wanted to highlight eight of those comments. Uh, one just being on number one, on the second page, that a restaurant or banquet hall, other than a tavern or nightclub, is permitted by right in the use in the C two general commercial residential zoning district. Um, and we'll probably have Mr. Johnson come back up, but we just wanted to make sure the applicant should clarify that the proposed use and the proposed hours of operation, which he had just mentioned. Comment two I highlighted, um, we wanted the applicant to clarify how the proposed, the proposal addresses the dimensional requirements of the C two R zoning district, and that can be done with a zoning table on the drawings. Um, and then we also wanted to point out that based on the drawings submitted, it appears that the proposal exceeds the maximum percent of impervious surface coverage, which for the C two R is ninety percent. Um, and we just want to make sure the applicant is aware of that, because they may need zoning relief through the zoning hearing board on that, or possible other dimensional requirements. If you skip to page three of the memo, I highlighted, um, comment six, which just indicates that a lighting plan should be submitted if a formal land development plan is submitted. Uh, and we bring that up because lighting, especially on that corner and for the type of business, will be a significant issue. Moving on to page four and comment eleven. And this relates to what Mr. Johnson just talked about. It's relating to the number of people he expects at the business. But according to the zoning, the required amount of off-street parking for a restaurant, um, which also qualifies as a banquet hall, is a one space per five seats plus one space per one point two employees. And again, the proposal shows eleven parking spaces. We do ask that the applicant clarify how the proposed parking addresses the zoning requirements for the expected number of patrons, because we do think this is gonna be a critical issue if a formal land plan is submitted. Just a few more comments I highlighted on page five. Item seventeen. This one is reference to any new or expanded vehicle parking or vehicle storage area, four more parking spaces. Um, sep- needs to be separated but from the public street by a planting strip. And then it lists how wide that planting strip should be. Again, this is something that the applicant will need to address. It may need zoning relief, um, if it can't be met, uh, through the formal land development process or through the zoning hearing board, I should say, as far as obtaining zoning, uh, relief. And the second to last comment I highlighted was item twenty-two, which talks about a minimum ten percent of each lot shall be landscaped. And again, um, this needs to be shown on the plans as far as landscaping goes and how that requirement will be met. And just the last item that I highlighted was literally the last item, item twenty-five. Seem to bring this up on all our developments, but if a garbage dumpster is not stored within a building, then it shall be screened and there should be identification how dumpster will be accessed and or screened. And that should be on the land development plan. So in the end, if you went through all these comments, I counted up, there's a possibility of a need for at least three variances possibly, if we see this in a, in a, in a, uh, the proposal. And so the applicant should look into that more to see if they actually need to request zoning hearing board relief, which we would recommend be taken care of before the, the formal submission of the land plan. Is there any questions on the Planning and Zoning Department's memo?
No, not at this time. We probably need Mr. Johnson to come up and answer some of those things, but I'm gonna. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. At this point, uh, we probably will need Mr. Johnson to address some of these issues for us.
All right, um, well, we could go through, we could go through the list. Like, the, like, for the dumpster, the building has a rear yard that's like apart from the parking spot, so the dumpster will probably go back there. And, um, my, uh, clients, uh, indicated that this was used as a banquet hall before. It didn't have any parking. We just parked it on the street. So he's expanding it so that it gives some type of relief for the parking through this plant for the neighbors. Well, yeah. And, um, that, the, it's two, it's two lots, which are, is pretty small for parking. Uh, for off-street parking. So, um, there might be an issue with, uh, ten percent in the buffering, cause it'll take up space off the lot. So we might need some relief from that. Um, lighting, we'll address the lighting. We'll provide lighting. Um, and just let me know what other concern you had, the.
The landscaping, the buffering.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly, yes. Yeah. So, yeah, that would be really tight. On this. So. And like I said, probably sixty people. Um, so we might be a little off one, by one or two parking spaces. Um, so we might need a little relief from that.
Okay. All right.
Just, as a clarification too, I, as a recommendation, if, I think if you actually created that zoning table for us and resubmit that drawing, I think that would help us, help you identify those variances that you may need. That way, you're figuring it out and we can react to it.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, I have a question. I don't know if you're supposed to ask questions, but the, the, um, hours of operation.
Right, that's what we.
Do, yeah. I mean, by right, in Chester, you can, uh, operate to two AM. I'm not, I don't know.
I meant to check that before in a restaurant.
Right.
I actually don't think it's two PM on a restaurant, yeah.
Two AM, but that is after. If they get approved and give zoning, then that.
We can address that.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. All right.
So we'll look it up, but, uh, yeah, I'm not sure.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anybody have any more questions for Mr. Johnson before Mr.?
I have any questions?
I could ask some questions.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah. Okay, and then I'll have Ron.
Ron come up, yeah.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you. We may call you back up.
No problem, no, no problem.
Okay. So you come up and introduce yourself, your name and your address, please. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Kaba.
Okay.
The owner. And, um, my question is, um, I, I, I think, um, we are not, like, coming to create something to mess up with the neighborhood. We, we thinking of, like, not bringing too much traffic. That's why we're thinking of coming up with this, because we can go ahead, having the hall as it is, because it was done for a hall. But we, but we want to be at peace with the neighbors. We don't want them to see we parking all over the place. So at least we can get at least eleven of the vehicles out of their way. So, um, I, so I was not expecting, like, we, we gonna, we, we doing something bad to the neighborhood. In terms of safety too, we can have a four-way stop sign at that intersection that you are talking about, because currently it's a two-way stop sign. Yeah, well, yeah, so I'm just asking for your consideration, but all those. I, I want to understand what is the stopping block that cannot be fixed?
Yeah, what we're saying is, so there's the zoning ordinance requirements.
Yeah.
You have to meet those. If your proposal doesn't, then you have to ask for zoning relief, which goes through the whole zoning or zoning hearing board process.
Yeah, are there stuff that can be fixed? Or they, or this is for.
Some of this stuff, for instance, maybe the landscaping, maybe an issue, maybe you can only get five percent. You would have to ask for relief for the other five percent. So it's an extra step in your land development process, but it's necessary to get approval. Um, and that's why the zoning ordinance is there, just as basically minimum requirements. And if it can't be met, you have to go to this extra level of effort. So, does that make sense to you, or?
So what's the next step from here?
In my mind, and I don't know if you want to talk about it, but like, let, let Ron go through his comments and then we can kind of circle back to that too. That's okay with you?
We'll call you back up.
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
Mm-hmm. And maybe after. Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman. Uh, Ron Madison, Colliers Engineering and Design. We provided our engineering review of the sketch plan, which is non-binding, the sketch plan process. There's no action for you this evening or this afternoon. Uh, we provided a lot of comments from the Sado and, and zoning. From a subdivision and land development process, it's appropriate to merge all three lots so that the parking lot is accessory to the primary use, the banquet hall, and not separate lots. So that's, the consolidation is pretty straightforward. The land development, most of our comments have to do with the condition of the existing sidewalk and, and, uh, curbing, and there'll be, need to be improvements to the sidewalk and the handicap access, uh, for the street crossings. And just to make sure that the parking spaces are dimensioned properly on the plans. All of which I think can be achieved. But really, the first step is for the applicant and his architect to work with the Planning and Zoning Department to identify what changes they can do to the plan to come more in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And then identify and articulate what zoning ordinance relief they need in the term of variances and then submit the application to the zoning hearing board. The, the zoning hearing board is a legal hearing, and I always recommend, uh, that the applicants obtain legal, uh, counsel, because it's a hearing. And I've been expert witness at a lot of zoning hearing boards, but I am an engineer and the arc, the attorneys want to set the record in case there is ever an appeal. And one of the key aspects for the zoning hearing board is, is the relief being requested the minimum relief necessary? So if the zoning ordinance requires an eight-foot grass buffer between the sidewalk and the parking lot, are they asking for relief of all eight feet? Or can they actually put in a three-foot, uh, grass buffer? And so all they're asking it for is from eight feet down to three feet instead of the whole eight feet? So you, between the architect and the applicant, look at the zoning, uh, non-conformities and see what can you do to amend your plan to come in better compliance so that when you're before the zoning hearing board, you're asking for the minimum relief necessary? In terms of the number of parking spaces, I, I, I think they can make the case to the zoning hearing board that this was a previous use, they're going to continue that previous use, but they're going to add more parking, which should help, even if they can't meet all the parking requirements. And so that's, that's for them to make the case to the zoning hearing board, what justifies those variances. But really, I think that's the next step, to meet with the planning and zoning, prepare your application, go to the zoning hearing board, get hopefully a positive vote by the zoning hearing board, and then you can complete your land development plans and come back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Hope that helps.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, so any questions that you may have?
I have a question. Um, from what I can see from the building, do you have a fire or escape plan in case there's an emergency? It seems as if you have steps in the back. Is that correct?
Yes.
So how would you accommodate someone ADA?
Well, um, that's where we are. That provision is made for the first floor.
Pardon me?
That provision is currently made for the first floor. As I said, um, this building was existing before we bought it. The people who did it before, they were approved to use it that way. So it will not be fair for that to be imposed on us, because it was approved to be used with, but if the people, if somebody's coming to rent their all, let me say we'll put it out for people to rent, we'll tell them that, um, if you want, if, if you're expecting disability, the first floor, choose the first floor. We're not gonna rent both up and down at the same time. It's gonna be one at a time. So, and we encourage them to use the first floor, which is wheelchair access. But we don't have any elevator to go second floor.
So as of now, you only have one way in and one way out?
No, you, you can enter through the front and you can e- exit through the back, both up and down. You can exit through the back.
So how would you accommodate someone that have issues as far as walking or getting around?
It's wheelchair accessible. We have ramps inside the building. You can enter the building with a ramp, but you cannot go upstairs as of now with a wheelchair.
So you only get on the first floor. So all business would be, all your business would be on the first floor. There would be nothing on the second floor.
Yes, of no.
And, um, were you done?
You have another question? You don't seem satisfied.
No, I'm not satisfied with that. Um, I did have another question. No, I'm not satisfied with that. Um, I did have another question. Oh, a, as far as the parking, parking, I know you said you're going to try to accommodate at least sixty people with the parking that you're providing plus on-street parking. I've noticed there's a church and several other buildings in the area. Have you spoken to any of those places to let them know that you have?
No.
Is it the banquet hall or is it a restaurant?
It's like a party, like for parties, for like birthday parties, yeah, like dancing. And these people you're talking about, they met us there. These are new churches that are coming up. I saw the church like adjacent to the building. They know that this is like, um, a party hall.
No, I'm just saying if they have an event and you have an event and it accommodates sixty people, suppose you have sixty-plus people or, you know, everybody, sixty people coming with a car, you know?
Yeah, they, they're not going to use our, our, oh, you mean the, 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 the street? They can use, it's, the, the building has a small street at the back, like a lane.
But I'm asking you, you have a church, I saw a church, and I saw several other buildings in the area, businesses in the area.
Yeah.
How are you all going to work with one another to accommodate this space for parking so, so you can have your event comfortably and they can, and also the residents to have their parking comfortably?
Just the same as when I go downtown or anywhere for a program, I have to find my parking. I, I don't ask the city.
But we're talking about your space.
This place is big. That place is always, there's always parking available.
Okay. Could you come forward, please? State your name, address. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Sylvia Kabah, and I'm at twenty-three South Woodlawn Avenue in Alden, PA. Um, Mr. Kabah is my husband.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't think he, you know, we have misunderstanding here with the question that you asked. And I'm just here to butt this with, um, answering the question. So I personally, I met with the neighbors. They were happy to see us and happy to, to know the plan of what we're about to do. And we share conversation with the, the parking. And the apartments that are next to us have parking accross. They are allowed to park across. It's an open lot that has a fence and it's for them. At the end of the block, there is a church. And when I spoke to them, they also have their parking on the side of their building. So because I explained to them that, um, this building on the first floor, which we intend to use, will be accommodating like sixty people, and we do have eleven, um, spaces to pack, car parking. And, you know, and we, we, we explained to them and they say, oh, no, you know, they were just, so we have a mutual agreement and they have their parking, the church have their parking. And if we approve, we will be having our parking. And also you have the street parking adjacent to the building across the tire store. You know, it's a lot of, you know, street parking additional to the intended parking lot parkings that will be have. But yes, the answer is yes. I did spoke to them and everybody have their own parking spots, including the church on the side, the church on, on across of us, the church on the same block with us, the apartment building, and also with the street parking.
No, I, um, my question is, you've both mentioned sixty as far as patrons. Or does that include your employees as well, that number of sixty?
Well, we also, um, have an empty lot that we own as well, which is across the building, which is twenty-six oh three. You, you know, we plan to come back and ask if our employees can park at that empty lot, which is twenty-six oh three West Third Street. We figure with this banquet building, parking will be very concerning. So that's why we're trying to accommodate our patrons. And at the same token, be, you know, moderate and be conceivable with the, with the residents.
Do you know who that lot at twenty-six oh three belongs to?
Me.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I have, I have a question. As far as the, um, if there was a fire.
Yes, ma'am.
And you had an event and there's cars parked in the lot and what have you. Um, I don't see a plan on whether the fire marshal has given their approval for if there's room to turn a truck. Um, so do you know anything about that?
No, I'm not sure. I will let Mr. Johnson or Mr. Kabah answer that.
Okay.
I'm limited with that information. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because we need to, to know.
Thank you.
If there was some kind of emergency, would you be able to, would the fire truck be able to turn?
For, for a small lot like this?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's no room for a fire truck. The fire truck could go through it, but there's no, there's, there's no space on the lot itself to turn a truck. The, the, the lot is just not wide enough.
Right. But the other thing too is if there were a fire and you have those cars parked there, and even if the truck was in the street, is there a back alley? It seems like there's a back alley according to what I saw.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a through light, so there's a, a, a driveway in the back. So, yeah, the fire truck could go through the back to get to the back of the building and I guess the main street to get to the front.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, not on that lot. It's too small.
Well, we would need that, we would need them to check that out to see, um, how that would work for them.
Part of our land development plan process, the Fire Marshal Office reviews the plans and then provides advice and will respond to the plan. There is a chance, maybe if you do come in front of the zoning hearing board, we could answer some of those questions as well. We can work with you on that separately.
So at this point, the Fire Marshal hasn't reviewed it yet, no?
No, no, not as part of a sketch plan typically.
Okay.
Um, but again, if you proceed and you want to proceed with this project, we can maybe work with the Fire Marshal Office and review it.
Uh, my other question is, um, did you plan on putting a sign up? Had you planned on putting a sign up, any signage, just to? Just a plain?
Just a plain sign.
Okay, well, that was something you'd have to go through zoning for?
I think so.
Okay.
Usually you have to go through zoning for a sign.
Zoning for the sign, signage, yes. I just want to make sure. And, um, let's see, I think that would cover everything I was talking about.
I think that was in the letter too about the signage, that you'd have to get a separate sign.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, it's probably in there somewhere.
And that's typically done after you've got the zoning permit and approval, obviously.
Go ahead. Were there, what are the plans, if any, for your second floor? Upper level?
Go, go ahead.
They want to know what about the second floor?
I mean, to be very candid, I haven't thought about it yet. So we just, we made it safe, very, you know, we just renovated it safe the way it was, make it safer, and.
Right now, so you're concentrating on the first floor? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, with the ramp and the, you know, the, um, handicap accessible toilets up front as well as at the back.
Right.
Pretty much make it accommodative and, um, handicap friendly.
Mm-hmm. Now, I have a question too. Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, did you plan on maybe getting a liquor license for that, uh, area?
No, ma'am, not at all.
Okay.
It's, it's purely.
Just a place that people could rent?
Yes, ma'am, just a space. Yes, ma'am. There's no bar.
Okay.
No, um, serving of liquor, none of that. Pretty much trying to make it so easy.
Right.
Less stressful.
Okay. So back to your dumpster. Um, how do you plan on covering your dumpster? Is that going to be, can I have the picture of the, yeah? I wanted to know whereabouts would that dumpster be? Thank you.
It's just going to be like a commercial dumpster where you got the lid and you close it, yeah. It's just a commercial dumpster in the back. It's, yeah, in the back of the building. Uh, like I said, it's a driveway back there, so.
So it'll be back like the alley way there?
Yeah.
It'd be rollers, except, yep.
And I don't know if it was clear, but there's no cooking on the premises. So people will just bring their food, if they, if it's food. There's no cooking on the premises.
So how do you get out to the back? Just from the second floor?
Oh, okay, yeah, let me explain the steps. The steps that you see here is coming from the second floor down to the grade. So in the back, on the ground floor, there's a door in the back that you could go in the backyard. So the steps is only, it's a, it's a second means of egress from the second floor that's already there. That's where, that's where you, why you see the steps in the back. They're already there.
Okay. My question, with regards to the dumpster, you're saying it would be in the back?
Yes.
Would it be taking up space of that back alleyway or driveway?
Oh, no.
That would impede a fire truck then if a truck had to come?
Oh, no, it would be on, on their prop, their private property in the back. There's plenty of space back there for probably two dumpsters.
All right, so this being a sketch plan, we don't have to.
There's no action required.
Go through.
Questions.
Work with them so that you can make sure that you cover the various things that we talked about today.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And we wish you luck and, um, see what happens.
Okay.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us. I just have a couple items, if that's okay with you.
All right. So now we're going to do the director's report.
And I will be brief. Uh, just wanted to make sure you got in your packet the buy right approvals.
Yes.
And if you had any questions about those, please let us know, either now or, or later, it's fine too. And then the second item, I just want to make sure you got my email from yesterday that had a list of resources that I think you might find interesting. One, there's a couple of basic ones in there, just a link to the NPC, which is always good to have in your back pocket as far as access to that. But then there's other lists of resources, including the classes that you've taken before from PMP EI. There are some being offered again in the spring. It's, they just go on a rotation, same classes. But if you're interested in, in taking a different one, let us know, or the same one, doesn't matter. And then, um, there's just some other resources in there, including a link to, uh, the APA's website, the American Planning Association website, the PA chapter. They have a good video in there on planning commissions. If you have time to look at it, I'd encourage you to use it or to look at it. But again, these are links you can go back to whenever you have the time. And if I find more resources out there, Kim and I will forward them to you.
All right.
Okay. Especially classes, which we are trying to keep an eye out for. All right?
All right.
Okay.
And our next regular scheduled planning commission meeting is April the ninth, twenty-twenty-five at two PM. And? Anything else?
No, I just want to make sure he did. Questions about the buy right as well, we gave you that in the packet.
Well, I have, I have a question about the buy right from, uh, the week, the month before.
Oh, yeah.
There was one at twenty-seven oh four, twenty-seven oh four Nolan Street, and they said it was a store. Does it make a difference whether it's a store or a restaurant?
You say it was from the month before?
It, we were given it, uh, I guess.
All your buy rights are on here for, uh, January two now.
Well, maybe, maybe that's the one, the first one that you had.
Now, there's nothing on Nolan that got anything by from you.
Yeah, you're right, Kim. I forgot these are from the year out, yeah, from January on.
Oh, this is the complete list from, this is for the first quarter?
Yeah. What is it that they were, was that your?
No, no, you gave us a list. I'm not certain if, if it was the previous one.
Oh, why?
I have to go back to look, like I said, but I noticed one had store at twenty-seven oh four Nolan Street. It wasn't a buy right, but it was asked to close down because of, I guess, the legality of it.
I'm not certain of.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Let me, let me go back and look back at the paperwork that you have given.
Okay.
And I was just wondering, it indicated that it was a store.
Yeah, but to answer your question, there is a difference in our zoning ordinance between the requirements for a store and a restaurant. There are separate uses, yes.
Okay, let me find it. I did see it, but you know, my brain.
That's okay. No, if you find it, let us know. We'll follow up on it.
I will, I will.
Okay.
All right. And if there's nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a motion to adjourn this meeting? I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is now adjourned and it is two forty-three. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Now, I can't hear him come with all his pain.
My, my worry, this, I, I, I'm sorry.
Right.
Like forty paces away from my house.
Mm-hmm.
But they just openly direct the people, but what are they doing? Because people are going to come, if you're having a party, they're having, they're going to, nothing, you're going to sell it.
Right.
People bring it in, do these young people, mandating the eighteen, because it used to happen when it was the, first of all, I don't know if they legally had paperwork for it to be a banquet hall. We'll start with that. They have to be, so, and they, it's the burdens on them to prove that it was previously a banquet hall.
And he checks under there.
But in addition to that, you had eighteen to twenty-four-year-old people drunk, walking up the street, driving up the street, taking mirrors off, drunk. And we have a bar on the next corner, twenty-seven oh one, has a bar right on the corner that they shoot like. As soon as it's warm outside, you're going to hear the pow-pow. The next two blocks up, there's another bar that's closed now, that's twenty-nine oh one, which is trying to make residences, which I'm really happy about. But this one, they're a block apart. They're out there shooting, fighting, but drunk is my worry because kids get in accidents and keep throwing.
Right.
We park in the back, so it's not like a personal thing, but I still worry about.
The area, yeah.
Who is going to control since you have a hall, you're renting an open hall, anybody, you come in. Do they have anything in their paperwork showing reflecting what is permissible and what is not? What concerning liquor, because no one's monitoring the eighteen-year-old getting drunk.
Have a good one.
Yep. Thank you, guys. And that's what I'm worried about, more than anything else. I don't want my nieces, nephews, cousins going in there and getting pissed. He's like, I'm watching. And then they go get hit by cars or something to cut their, yeah. So it is.
And who's liable?
About the two ways, stop sign, there isn't a four-way. So people just fly up their street.
They don't pay any attention to any of the song, anyway.
So I'm really worried about the place, parking, at least in my world.
Right.
Because when it was a banquet hall, there wasn't a parking issue as much as it was spit up up the street. Um, people hitting people's cars and the mirrors coming on.
It's not the VLD. What is it?
This used to be called the Palladium.
Oh, that's the place. I was trying to pick out.
This was called the Palladium.
Okay.
And I think it was the VLD back in the.
Maybe.
Eighties.
Maybe.
We're talking eighties.
Yeah. But I'm just worried, that, that aspect of it worries me because these young people are doing what the older people are doing, but can't control themselves.
Right.
And then they're out there fighting, shooting. It turns into so much more. So I'm just wondering, do they, will they have anything in writing for?
Well, that's part of what can go through with the zoning to make sure, but no, to make sure about the drinking.
Oh, about the drinking, yes.
About people bringing, if you're having a. You know, about people bringing, if you're having a party and they're bringing in the liquor.
They are, really.
And they're gonna do that, how are you controlling that?
Yeah.
What's allowed, what's not.
And we can make that a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is what he said, but I'm like, oh, we need something like that in writing.
Yes.
Everyone at the parties, whatever, every last person, if you rent that out for four hours, all they care about is getting a couple thousand for four hours. They're in and out, they let you in, you do your own thing, and then they let, you know, they lock it up. But who's monitoring, what kind of security is gonna be out there, all that, that's my worry. You know, people are something else, twenty-seven oh one, already, people are getting shots like every other week in the summer. Like every other week, you wake up to the gunshots, now I come to a lot closer to them. I'm on twenty-five oh eight, they're on the same side.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm like, okay, that's the even side.
Yeah.
I'm like, I don't speak to picky folks. They can find a building if they're.
She said she lived on Woodland Avenue and, uh, all of that, and I'm like, so.
The thing against us is that it was previously, I just wanted to prove, how do you know, especially homeowner?
Okay.
You don't live here, you don't, you know, you have a CO, because if they leave one in there, prove it, because they can't find it.
Oh.
To prove it. So that's why we're making them do the whole, give us off the street parking.
Right.
Make it difficult, that's what we're trying to do. And then let them, because they're not planning, you know, because I'm telling, every little thing happens, I'm gonna be on phone. Because I, people have died. And then you going, yeah, it's my payment.
You don't even live here.
And all these people gonna be in front of Judge Garner, every man's one of them, is gonna be in an accident, get thrown, and all of them gotta be in front of.
Well, look, he'll keep a job for real.
Wrong, wrong, yeah, on, on the other side of that. And it's personal to him, so it's like, they were going to, yeah. Yeah, hurts it. But that was, I'm sitting listening, I'm, you know. But I just want, I don't mind it, if they're gonna wreck something to the churches and let them have a party or banquet, fine. But you talking about partying and these young people, and you said two in the morning?
First he said two in the morning, then he changed. Then he said midnight, then he tried to figure, I said, oh.
I have to be quiet because I'm gonna testify. That's mine, because I'm here all the time. I'm like, I'm.
But I like your sending us the text.
Like, I wanted to be, but I didn't want to make it through.
I saw when you did this, I knew exactly what you told.
But what are your plans on mandating that they do not bring it, you're saying you're not, but what do you, do you have something?
Is it gonna be in your contract?
Absolutely, absolutely, and then where you doing it? Right now it's just a sketch plan.
Right.
So, they turn in their paperwork, it's somebody who's probably named Rashawn, don't have a, not gonna say who she is to them or nothing, so we ask them to be here.
Okay.
Application don't have them, it shows Rashawn out there, it's the applicant, this man did plan it, but he don't have an address, he don't have to go down the field.
And you kept asking for his address.
Yeah, that's why I said, I'll put it there on the record so we can find him, because then you said. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and, and I'm, again, I'm, I wanna be able to answer, but I can't because I'm not allowed, because I'm not a person testifying, so I'm like, I want somebody to say, oh, what the fuck are you doing about the parties?
You know, because.
Yeah, because I, I was at the churches.
However.
But how, it don't matter if it's two. I'm trying to speak to someone.
It don't matter if it's one, that person deserves.
A bar a block away, they're a block away. Well, right next door.
This is twenty-six oh one.
That's why, I don't know if you saw the picture, I brought up the picture, and I'm like, a beauty barn next door, what is that, a hair shop?
A beauty barn. And what, right next door or across the street?
Right next door.
I don't even know that, there were apartments next door to them.
But, yeah, but it doesn't have like a business storefront, it's like a regular storefront on the second floor, and I'm like, okay, did they just not take the signage? Or did they not come through zoning, because I don't even know that, I didn't even notice it.
And that's why I asked about signage, because.
Because they need a final.
What are you using, what are you using those other two floors for, because that's, that's.
That has to be disclosed, yeah.
See, I tried not to. So this used to be the mayor's office.
So I don't even know that was there, because I tried my best, yeah. That was the mayor's campaign office, so that was his campaign office.
Yeah, I remember that.
So, you went from a bar to a, I don't know nothing about it. Do they have a license or?
And you see, the front doesn't look like this, that does not look like any type of business.
Oh, but that's twenty-six oh seven, it says, that's across the street.
Here's the building right there.
Oh, yeah, so that's just wrong. Your thing is wrong, that's all. Yeah, that was the mayor's office, that was the mayor's campaign, so.
So it never, once it changed, they never came to us, I don't even know the days, but I gotta.
Yeah, now you got something to look at. So tell me about my logging place, is it, what's happening, is that anything?
One more time.
I call it the logging place, that is the place at twenty-fifth Providence.
Nothing, I don't know. What is? Twenty-fifth Providence, that hasn't even been brought up since.
Oh, the one that's.
I know that they're, they're in court, they've been in court without an eye, but I don't, they don't report to us, and it's like some legal we don't know, um, so I don't know, that's a good question.
Yeah, I never, I, I checked this out a couple months ago, I have, uh, it's out, everybody's regarding this.
That is.
When you drive by, I don't think, I mean, it's a game.
And until somebody gets hurt, because those, they're sinking, and I guess they're falling, I haven't looked down in there.
They don't look safely staffed.
No, they're not, and so, so the kids are gonna come, you know, and the weather gets nicer and kids start going down there, because it's a nice little place to hang out.
Absolutely, and then it would fall.
Then all of a sudden they fall. Then what happens? What do you need me to say?
I did wanna mention one thing about the parking of this place. And we have, I feel like something that we need to ask, which I think you are, is like, they, well, how, I can say, well, right now, the street's wide open and there's, oh, man, we're trying to build up places.
That's right, right.
And when they see there is no parking, it's gonna look less attractive to them to invest.
Sure.
So, that's not a good argument, it's more like, that's not what we're trying to do in future. Although a parking problem is a good problem to admit it.
Cross the street from there, I wanna see their twenty-six oh three, remember they said they own that, I don't remember it being open land.
I thought that was interesting too, but.
Right.
I didn't know that either, because they didn't put it in nothing, like I said.
Somebody named Rashawn filled out the ad, who is Rashawn? Is she gonna rent this for you, or is she gonna manage it for you, but she shouldn't be the advocate?
In other words, it is just one way, straight on through.
The owner should, okay, because at first I saw it, it was locked off. I'm just trying not to talk to them, because they're gonna be like, oh, it's the same thing, and somebody's gotta be, you know, term.
Yeah, so it is, okay, so that is what those people.
Yeah. I'm not, you go where you're at, you go all the way back home, and have somebody from here manage it, and it's going to be nothing to the point of contention.
No, they're on this county.
Right there in front of chef, every last one of them.
Okay, my other place is, um, you know, I was talking about on Walnut Street, twelve and Walnut.
Across the street. And the familiar.
Oh, here it is, this is it right here, this open lot right here is what they're referring to, see it? That's their lot, okay, it is open. Twelve and Walnut is.
That's where they have the.
Oh, you're talking about the tow thing?
The tow place, yeah, so they're starting to bring the trucks back, the tow trucks.
Oh, see, and that's crazy, because I go past there all the time, but I see a limo bus kinda parked across the street on the ninety-five side, which the police should be on that, yeah, right, involved. But, but they do have to do, and they have, they have a letter, and they agreed upon bringing down the electric gate that is across the line of this property. They still parking and using that, utilizing that property for whatever, I can't say their business, because they don't have any signs out there, they didn't take the, uh, address down, but I haven't seen tow trucks, you seen tow trucks there? Yeah, I haven't, so.
I'll have to look, because I didn't.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I look, I try.
It's the weekend.
Oh, that's wrong. See, I get on Commodore Valley and get kicked on, yeah, but when I'm at work, Monday through Friday, I go past there almost every day, I go past there, but Monday through Friday, I'm riding my Commodore, so I get Commodore Valley.
Where do you live, Kim?
The very next block up, from these people right here, twenty-five oh eight.
Yeah, I can flow right down into where your block is.
Oh, I know, that's what she said, I'm there, that's why I have it.
I'm glad they're saying sixty, but how many times does it run over sixty?
That's right.
It's never been sixty.
It's never been sixty, it's always been more than that, trust me, like ten tables they put in there, like five, five each side, ten people, two a table is a hundred.
No, I'm just. I'm just going by what you said.
I know, you asked.
It's like a hundred people that usually go in and out.
But it's not going to be.
And I will be honest, when the banquet hall was on, parking wasn't a problem as much as, because people just did what they wanted on that lot.
So what's that twenty? Is that empty?
Um, for them to be able to wanna offer to do that, I get it, my problem was the chaos with the young people drinking and then tearing up people's cars. Nobody monitoring these parties, shooting, fighting, that's my worry, just, um, more than, more than the, the parking, um. You've got these people that live in Philly, and they just rent, they get their money, and they're worried about all the rest of the stuff.
Oh, no. Just like a lot of properties, like I'm telling you, in, in Chester, period, people are from New York or whatever that are the investors. Have to put a date on here or.
I will do it, because.
Okay.
Get my, my, what'd you say? I suppose that's not really a lot, that's an open space, so it's not like there's. Well, it's their lot, like it's a parcel, so it's considered a lot, and it does go back to a alley, so you can go th, drive through it, but it's only about fifteen. That's not there like that. Oh, absolutely, no, you better know, so this, so, the previous owner sold this to another Asian family, and I called them right in, when they bought it and brought in a thousand tires in.
Yeah, because let me sign, the secretary's.
You'll see now, they have, it's so organized and beautiful, you can see.
Oh, you know, I saw that.
They actually have racks that they made, they have containers in the back that they painted, and it looks really nice and professional, and the tires are not, nothing like that, because they bought mosquitoes, um, to us, and we get our grass treated. And we were getting killed, like still, because the mosquitoes were in the tires accumulating in the water, yeah, so they, no, they're great, like they're really a good tenant, they're good neighbors.
Is it here or is it?
Okay, but across the street. So I worry about these kids, because these kids are out of control, and these parents, they worry about what their kid's going, gonna go get drunk, from seventeen, they there, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, getting drunk, 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 laid out in the street, we hear gunshots in the middle of the night, and like I said, half these people going in there right before the chef, Judge Garner. And I, I, I just wanna make sure that they have something.
No, just bring it in the front.
For you to enable people to rent a banquet hall, you have something to take care of, security, you require that.
Did I do that on the other side?
And make, and make sure that there is the liquor, and if you do have drinking, they have to be of age.
Of age.
But we're not doing all, smoking the weed and all this stuff.
Even if they're of age, they still have to be monitored like at a bar, you can't have just.
Absolutely. It's a party.
Till they fell out.
So I don't want.
And all they're interested in is making the money.
Money, yeah, we wake up, we're twenty-seven oh one, when as soon as it gets warm, our first day of warmth, it's pow, 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 two in the morning, we both jumping up, say a prayer. We used to text the chief and just let him know, there's gunshots again, you know, and then they'd send a cop down there and try to.
Nuisance, it can't be.
I don't know. I don't know, like for. It would go through Ellen I and the police, or them, but because it's hard for me to. Film, that's in there. Yes. Yeah, someone has to be the voice because, as a, he's a judge, and it's like your internal, and I'm in planning.
Doesn't wanna meet four times a year or something like this. I can't, I can't attend anything.
You don't know anybody, we trying to recruit.
But I, but you can, then information, that'll work, you can do that.
Honestly, quickly, I saw that. Oh, you didn't get that?
You can do that.
No, an email to who? It came out, I saw it, I thought it was.
Supposedly retired, right?
Who sent an email, Mr. Harry? Did you get an email from Sarah?
I am busier now than ever.
Did you get an email from Sarah? Oh, it wasn't her.
Nobody's heard of it.
No, you didn't see that email he sent, it was mixed up, and he was saying that he has things going on, his wife is some, his wife's sister passed, and something else, and he's not gonna be able to be, continue being.
No, I didn't see that, because I dropped the package off to him, but I, he hasn't, I seen him, had a banquet I was at, and I seen him avoid, avoiding, so I was like, oh, okay. I'm not at work, I gotta go say hello back.
Or don't say anything.
But no, I didn't get that message, so I didn't know that.
I, I didn't.
I, I remember him saying that he has some situations, but not that he won't be able to be.
So all we have to do is say, uh, don't say that, situation, I will no longer participate.
Yeah.
Email.
Stop, don't, don't tell her no, tell her no.
It's not that easy.
Not that easy for you, no, no, no.
But I know there's some of this interest. Kim has already called me and threatened me while I was.
What about the lady? That's what I was asking.
Oh, we're already on, we're already on.
Okay, is she?
Her or whichever one.
Yes, yes.
No, we're already on. Are, are they saying about providing a stipend for us or anything?
Remember the lady who was here doing all that talk and about the property?
For the, the, the planning commission, um, not planning, the public works.
Right.
You remember the neighbor across the street that came in, husband and wife, that came in?
Yes, I remember, yeah.
Places that have like. Can you give me her number, we can't. You know, more board.
The Wydeners.
Yeah, I know them personally. Yeah, we, we, we're interested in recruiting, they had sit them down and talk, like the stipend or something.
But we appreciated, they did their due diligence. The funny thing is, that's what? They had a list of questions. I thought it was on this morning too.
That's what I, yeah, we have, we both have been discussing, and I said, look, I'm gonna go knock on the door, because I have their address.
Was over, I kept saying to her, we need to have them, we need to have them, the old.
I didn't wanna be, you know, knock on their door, I wanted to like call and say.
Oh, I'll call them.
Call, and see if they're interested, because.
She gonna call them today.
We love them, like that is the topic of conversation, I said, I'll go knocking on the door, I said, they was scared of me, they run the corner from me, he was like, I wanted to go knocking around in my store, because it'd be dangerous, I'd like to send a letter or call.
I'll just, I'll call her.
He just said if they're interested, but I did so appreciate it.
I just married someone before.
On my way here, and I'm like, oh, that gonna need to replace them.
Yes.
We appreciated their, their ropes, they literally were highly, one of the most impressive people that have been here in years.
And on top of that.
They're interested, we are to, you know, don't pay, but it pays, because you're doing service for your communities, you know what I mean? I volunteer with the seniors and different other places, you know. I think it's okay to forward it to me.
Yeah, absolutely, it's okay, we can get their telephone number.
I can give them, yeah. Absolutely, you most certainly can, yeah, absolutely.
There you go, so that's good.
She knows them personally.
She's gonna contact them and let them know and see what can be done.
Y'all want, you want me to put orders in the refrigerator that, that aren't open, and I bring them next time, or you?
That's perfect, thank you, because I have mine, thank you.
I keep them downstairs. I keep them down. Bringing my own, and I should.
Right.
I mean, we'll, I can know, once we committed, we were like, well.
That's good, you know, when it's hot, we'll need them.
When it gets warmer, are you gonna provide water rice?
Well, maybe that's a perfect, I mean, it's.
I'm just, I'm just.
Perfect looking for a step. How about some water?
No, it, it, it's not, no, it's. The milk's water rice is scrumptious. This is what people are asking, ones I have asked.
Oh, JPMorgan.
I said, no, we don't, I don't get anything, you know.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, it is, I haven't, um. I have to wait till it gets another hot day. So that's good.
Things going with you. So, Kim? The next meeting is when?
Uh, April the ninth, April the ninth.
I have a procedure on April eighth.
Oh, gosh.
After I switch weapons, doctor, just go to show you, you ain't getting results, which, after a whole year and a half, I get to a different one, and he's like, I've seen a report, see, but there's the MRI report, and I said, I don't have one, he said, you didn't get one? I saw this three times, and all the guy could tell him, like, yeah, we'll do this, we'll do that, he said, first thing you need to do is get your, yeah. Dragging me out, dragging me out, dragging me out over for a year. This little doctor, as soon as it came back, a tear, fragments, and a flat hanging, he said, we can go in and clean that up, and the same day, purchased for two days. Yeah, and I could say, I'm starting to feel there's something here and it moves, and then I started a loop pain, where it was just shooting, just ran. This guy in Dona Richa, he went to, uh, Crane, this is now, and then showing up the MRI comes back, there was a tear with some fragments and a fat. I was saying, Jim Mitty. Who I mean from.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah, keep an eye on your phone sometimes during the meetings, sneak somewhere and go, ask them this.
That, that, that was good, that was good, that was good, that was a good move.
But I saw, I saw her with this.
And then after that, I looked, I'm like, there's a message. The planning commission, because some of them were new, and then, well, they were not asking anything, and just, I'm running stuff to be there, and then the one person was like, uh, we don't, don't send any information, you know, and all of that, and don't come back into the thing anymore, like I was trying to stop. I'm like, no, I'm just trying to teach you the question, so you'll know what to ask, because all this stuff is important. But they were making it seem like I was against, I'm not. We have to legally do whatever the ordinance says, you know what I mean? But if you don't know it and haven't studied it, I'm just sending you stuff to say, ask them this, ask them that, and they, they stopped me. I said, okay. I guess it was a family member coming or something. To give her my phone number and have her call me as soon as she